Thank you. I’m Joe Mazza, First Selectman. I’d like to call these public hearing to order, please. First of all, I’d like to welcome everybody here, and it’s nice to see such a turnout. I’d like to, first of all, tell you the format of this public hearing. First order is we’re going to have a presentation by Jim Portley, our engineering, head of Engineering Department, our town engineer, who will give you a presentation on the Shoreline Greenway Trails procedure and the design of the Route 1 section. I told Jim to try to make it as condensed as possible, considering the large crowd here tonight, and the fact that we want to give everybody who wants to speak the chance to speak now. And then we will have a public comment. Now, as far as the public comment goes, because of such a large crowd, we’re going to have to limit comment to two to three minutes. And please keep your comments to no more than three minutes. We want to give everybody a chance to give their opinions, please. As far as the order of who will speak, you can line up on my right side here. You see this line here. So on a first-come, first-come basis, it doesn’t matter if you’re for the project or against the project. We’re not going to divide it by who’s for or who’s against for who speaks. Just line up on the side here. Now, you do not have to line up now. You can line up after Jim’s presentations if you want to sit and relax. That’s fine. We will stay here as long as it takes so we can listen to everyone’s opinion. The Board of Selectmen are here tonight. I’ll take your question in a minute, sir. The Board of Selectmen are here tonight to hear your comments. There will be no action by the Board of Selectmen. We’re not going to vote on anything tonight, so let’s be clear about that. A public hearing is just that, to hear your comments. Like I said, please keep your comments to no more than three minutes. If you go beyond that, I will have to ask you to sit down, and the next person will speak. Please keep in mind, we’re all friends and neighbors of Guilford, and please respect everyone’s right to speak and everyone’s opinion. I don’t want to have to say that again. We’re all friends here, okay? Thank you.[218.51][218.51](APPLAUSE). Sir, you had a question?
Yes. In the order of speaking, is there preference given to Guilford residents?
Uh, no. And by the way, I’m glad you asked that. We, in preparation with this, I’d like to think we did our research. We checked with the legal counsel. Anyone can speak. You don’t have to be a resident of Guilford. And I’m not going to ask if you’re a resident, so you can speak first. We’re going to open it up to anyone who would like to speak. Yes, sir?
Can we request that people state if they’re from Guilford?
I’m glad you brought that up. As part of the procedure, I am going to ask you to state your name and address, and that is only for the record, so the clerk can keep proper minutes of this hearing, okay?
Including the town?
Sorry?
Full address.
Full address, yes, sir. Thank you for that. Any other questions? Okay, let’s begin. Jim, thank you.
Thank you. Before you turn off the lights, please. Good evening, everybody. I have to bear with me, I’ve never done a PowerPoint before. I’m used to...
(APPLAUSE).
Well, that’s what I like to hear.
(APPLAUSE).
This one, okay. Can you hear me now?
Yeah.
All right. Let me start by saying, this is the first time I’ve ever done a PowerPoint, so it might be a little sloppy, but the whole idea is to try to get as much information on these slides as we can, and then try to educate you where we, how we got to this point right now. So it’s the Shoreline Greenway Trail Multiuse Path, and today is the public hearing. The agenda would be, give some background on how we got here. We’re going to talk about the Guilford Trail section, and then we’re going to go through the project details. Shoreline Greenway Trail started, first public meeting in 2002. A lot of people invited, a lot of people attended, and it went forward from there. Also in 2002, the town did a transportation plan that was under the auspices of the Planning and Zoning Commission. It looked at all the aspects of transportation in Guilford, roads, trails, sidewalks, and so forth. It tried to develop a long-term plan for transportation in the town. This plan was approved by the Board of Selectmen at the time, it was also approved by the Planning and Zoning Commission, and is now part of the plan of development for the town of Guilford. Part of that plan was to, a plan to expand the existing sidewalks in the center of town. And what, the reason I bring that up now is because, let me go back, a section of that plan called for a sidewalk to be constructed from the green, which is right in this area here, out Boston Street, it goes to about that point right now, but then also extended to the river. So that was a plan that was proposed in 2002. Again, it was a long-term plan, a long-range plan. Other aspects of that sidewalk plan have been incorporated into town’s infrastructure since then. Recently, we’ve just completed the construction of the sidewalk on River Street. Again, in fulfillment of that plan, that’s where we’re going, and we take that plan very seriously, what we want to do in terms of serving the town. And this is what the townspeople asked us to do. In March 2006, under a federal financing bill, $2.65 million was appropriated to build a trail from East Haven to Madison. This was done under what they call earmark system. This money was set aside. It was to be divided between Guilford, Madison, East Haven, and Branford. The federal project is to be administered as a high priority project through the Connecticut Department of Transportation. January 2008, South Central Regional Council of Governments. We are part of a 15-town Council of Governments organization. They adopt a resolution authorizing the agency to be the lead partner in this trail. None of the towns that received the appropriation wanted to take that lead, so they explored the possibility that the South Central Regional be the lead agency, and they approved that plan. In January of 2008, Shoreline Greenway Trail received additional money from the State Bonding Commission to cover 20% of the local matching fund. The federal grant required that they would provide 80% of the cost of construction, but there had to be a 20% local matching that was provided by localities. What the Shoreline Greenway Trail did is they, their group, applied to the state and received a grant that was covered the 20% local costs, so that no community would have to dig into their own pockets to pay for this trail. In January 2009, the Council of Governments authorized Stan Tech Consulting Services to prepare a preliminary engineering study of the whole trail from, basically from New Haven to Madison. And Stan Tech was employed to do that. Let’s see, yeah. Stan Tech finished the preliminary engineering plan in March of 2011. The study recommends that the trail alignment in Guilford follow the Route 1, Route 146 corridor. They looked at all other possibilities, finding none available. They found the only feasible way to travel through Guilford on a trail would be use Route 1, use 146. In July 2012, the town requested the Connecticut DOT to authorize the town to begin the preliminary design of the first section of the trail in Guilford. This section begins at the town line with Madison and ends on Route 146, Route 1 intersection. The section will be designed by the town engineering staff. In October of 2012, DOT approved that initial authorization, and the design began. And again, what I want to do there is reference back, the reason this was such an easy decision for the town was that we already had identified that area as an area we wanted sidewalks. So to go from the East River towards the center of town, towards the green, was an easy approval for the town. It would allow us to implement the sidewalk plan with, again, no cost to the town. In August of 214, the town of Guilford holds a public information meeting on the first section of the trail. Everybody who was under the trail along Route 1 and 146 were sent letters telling as well as all public officials that this public information meeting would be held, and that was conducted. In 215, Shoreline Greenway Trail receives a Connecticut Department of Energy and Wildlife Protection Grant for the Guilford Trail. That was secured because it appeared that in the initial construction cost estimate that there would not be sufficient money in the initial federal grant and the supplemental state bond money to complete it, so additional money was sought by Shoreline Greenway Trail, and that was received. In June of 216, we prepared and submitted to the DOT the final design for the trail. There was many give and takes, back and forth on the design, but the Guilford Engineering Department submitted the final design in June. In August, the town of Guilford presented the coastal area management application for the trail to the Guilford Planning and Zoning Commission. The application was withdrawn because it was indicated that the Board of Selectmen had to make that application, since it was a town facility. So the engineering department couldn’t do it. It had to come from the Board of Selectmen. So that’s where we stand. As a result of that, the Board of Selectmen vote at the regularly scheduled meeting at to set a date for a public hearing, which is tonight, on the first section of Shoreline Greenway Trail. Subsequent to this public hearing, a decision will be made, one way or the other, whether to submit that coastal area management plan to Planning and Zoning, and also to, of the eight, what they call the 824 referral, which is a mandatory statute, that any, says that any, any public improvement has to go to the Planning and Zoning Commission for approval. Now, the Guilford Trail section. Path will run on the south shoulder of Route 1 from Madison Town Line to Route 146 intersection, approximately 3,500 feet. Path will be 10, eight to 10 feet in width with a paved surface and a stone chip seal finish. Horizontal and vertical line will follow that of Route 1. Right-of-way impact, the trail will be located entirely in the right, the Route 1 right-of-way. There will be no construction or need to build a trail on any private property. Grading easement is required from two budding properties, 60 and 70 Boston Post Road for trail construction. One of those easements has been secured. The other one is in the process. Trail section, historical archaeological impact. Because there was federal money involved, we had to do an archaeology study. The study by Raiber Associates showed that there was no archaeological features along this trail that needed to be secured. Storm drainage path will cross over to the runoff. All the runoff will go out to Route 1. There will be no impact on any properties. There was no utility impact, and there is minor impacts to existing road storm drainage. We will basically just have to secure or adjust catch bases. The cost, the construction cost was estimated to be $640,355. There’s a contingency figure of $13,000. Add it to that, full-time construction inspector, $130,000. These numbers for the full-time construction inspectors are percentages of the initial cost, and they are, they come from DOT. They’re directing us to include these in our project. There’s a Connecticut DOT administration cost, their oversight, doing their paperwork is for $56,700. Total project cost, $840,055. The funding summary, federal high priority project, $484,000 for the feds, state bonding provided another $121,000, DEP grants is $270,000. Bringing our total funding to $875,000. So that’s more than we needed to have to proceed with the project. This is a layout of the project, starting, sorry, starting at the East River, right at the bridge, and traveling westerly to 146. This is the triangle there, right opposite the water tower. You see the water tower here. So that’s, that’s the route of the trail. And what I have is a series of plates here that show the layout of the, of the path as it progresses from 146 towards the river. And in red, you’ll see the trail. It’s a 10-foot wide trail. There’s a section, it’s identified as green. Because of the limitations in the right-of-way, the green section is only an eight-foot wide trail. And then, once we get past Lower Horseshoe, the first couple of properties, then we resume with the eight-foot, the full 10-foot wide path all the way to the terminus at 146. So that, that’s a quick view of where the trail is going. I think everybody pretty well knows that by now, see all the stakes and everything else there, and I think everybody is pretty well advised where it’s going. This is a typical cross-section. This is just an engineering detail. There’s going to be six inches of processed stone. There’s going to be pavement, and then the surface will be a chip seal. And the chip seal surface was arrived at because it was an attempt to provide an aesthetic look to the trail. The Madison section of the Greenway Trail over at Hammond Ascent was constructed with stone dust and processed stone from the Stony Creek quarries. It has a nice pink hue. It was asked, the Shoreline Greenway Trail Committee asked to see if we could, we could secure some, some look that’s similar to that. And the only real way to do that would be to pave the, pave the path, and then pour or put a chip seal on top of the, the, the proposed pavement, so that you have that, that chip seal would be 3/8 stone that we would buy from the Stony Creek Quarry to give us the same look as you see over in the Hammond Ascent trail. This is a typical detail of what would happen at, like, Horseshoe Road, this is Upper Horseshoe Road. The, the trail would come to, to the road, there would be places where there would be a stop sign, a stop bar for the users of the trail, so that they came to the road, they would have to provide, they would have to stop. Motorists also traveling or exiting from Horseshoe would have, come to that cross, crosswalk, they would have to stop. But there’s sufficient signage there to direct users of both the roadway and the trail to provide safe transit through the intersection. We have a series of, and you see, see a lot of them up here, too. People have gone ahead and done the same thing. We’ve taken just pictures of Route 1 and outlined along Route 1 in various sections where the trail will look, will be. You’ll see, this is in front of Apple Rehab, that’s 42 Boston Post Road. The picture, the property above, this would be, that would be, let’s see, this is starting from the back. Okay. This is in front of Jones’s House. You see those posts are there. This is further up, further up, approaching Lower Horseshoe. And as you pass through Horseshoe, then you have a series of properties, Sixth Horseshoe, Sixth Horseshoe. That’s McGee House, a property. As you approach, we’ll cross Upper Horseshoe, then we go across and the followers, that alignment. Goes across Guilford Automotive. As you probably all know by now, it’s been discussion around, that whole front parking lot of Guilford Automotive is in the town, oh, not town, but the state right-of-way. It has been used by them for a long time. We did meet with George Anastasio back in 2012, told him what a plan was to build this. He didn’t have, seemed to have much problem with it at all. Little did we know that he was the owner of the business, but he didn’t own the property. But he, he had the, he was fine with the idea that we were going to beautify, beautify the front of his property. Subsequent to that, to that event, we did note, we did send letters to the property owners on several occasions to tell them that this, the plan for the trail was being developed, and you can hear anything until recently. So we have the trail going through, in this case here, it’s going in front of the motel. Again, we met with Mr. Patel, told him that we had two options. One was to go out in front towards the street, while one was to kind of put the trail behind all his plantings. It would be a nice facility for traveling and wouldn’t require any, any movement at all of his landscaping. It, at the time, he had, didn’t have any objection to our, our use of that approach. Again, we notified him on several occasions with letters that the trail, the public information meeting was going to be held, and then the public hearing was going to be held. So it’s, we’ve tried to keep him abreast of what is also going on. Again, here is Tower Motel. Again, we set the trail back. Here is 340, that was, it’s Blaha property at the time. It’s, it’s now owned by somebody else. And there it goes, and there’s the terminus just beyond the stop bar on 146. We originally had intended to stop it on this side. You see that driveway apron in front of you? We wanted to stop it on this side of that, but the DOT, and they’re looking at it from the traffic point of view, they asked us to move it beyond the driveway apron, set it back from the, from the stop bar on 146 for safety reasons, and we complied with their request. So that kind of is, in a nutshell, I tried to move it as fast as I could. I want to kind of highlight a few things, though, in going through this. One of the reasons we, we set the trail back from the, from the edge of the road was basically that there are 12,300, 12,300 vehicles traveling on Route 1 on average, that’s the average daily traffic. It, there’s a lot of vehicles, a lot of people going down. You all know as well as I do, people are traveling at a pretty high rate of speed. To put that, even if it’s a sidewalk, right next to the road, would not be, in my mind, a very safe approach to providing pedestrian access along Route 1. Even on River Street recently, when we built that section, we left a verge between the gutter, the new curb line, and the sidewalk, again, because people tend to travel pretty fast on that road as well. So that was one of the considerations that was also requested by the Shoreline Greenway Trail, that we create that, that different distance from the travelway to the walkway. So that, that was an important consideration. Couple other things. In the preliminary design, we had originally thought to remove that flashing light at Upper Horseshoe. Several weeks ago, I met with, at the request of the Homeowners Association at Sunrise, they were very vocal in that they opposed the removal of this, of the flashing light. I did check with the DOT. They didn’t have any problem with us leaving it there. We’ll have to make some adjustments in construction cost, but I think it’s a very doable thing, and what our full intent is revise these final plans that would include that, that flashing light. And the last thing I would say is that there has been some talk, too, and I’ve talked to Doug McGee, he’s concerned about removal of some of the vegetation between his house and Route 1. And what I’ve told him is that it would seem to be appropriate, if there are residents who feel that they’ve lost some privacy because of the construction of this trail, we would include a line item in the bid that would call for the placement of reuse and to kind of create a block or a screen between the houses and where the trail would be constructed. Again, working with the neighbors to try to ease the pain of having, having the loss of the vegetation. We did, well over a year ago, mark major trees down at Lower Horseshoe that will have to come out to, to build this trail. They were marked with yellow ribbon, and I, you know, we did, I could go back, I don’t know if Mr. Mazza has patience with me, because I’ve been going on too long, but these trees, that, those trees there, longest sections, some of these, they would have to be removed. Again, I would offer it to the homeowners along that, that section as well, that we would work with them to place some vegetation. We would put a line item in the bid to provide trees or plantings like upright use to provide that screening. So those are two, two minor modifications to the plans that, that we have prepared, again, to, in an effort to respond to the interests of the, of the people along the way. So that, hopefully that’ll, is concise enough, and that’s where we are.
Okay.[1617.65][1617.65](APPLAUSE).
Thank you.
Good job, Jim. Thank you very much. Before we start with the first round of comments, I did have a conversation with First Selectman Vanish over in Madison, because there was some confusion and a lot of concern as to where Madison was with their section of the trail going from where we would end at the East River and where Madison would begin their trail from the East River going east. Unfortunately, First Selectman Vanish is a little bit under the weather tonight, but he did send his second selectman, Selectman Robert Hale, right here. Bob, if you’d like to come up and address the, our town, be nice to him, he’s our neighbor, okay? Bob? And then, right after Bob finishes, we’ll start with the first comment. Bob, welcome to Guilford.[1691.51][1691.51](APPLAUSE).
It’s good to be here.
And this, by the way, this is the mic you want to speak into.
Okay.
The other one is the video, so.
Okay. Originally, Madison had proposed to do the Greenway Trail in the area of Liberty Street. And back in April, we determined that Liberty Street wasn’t going to be doable because it’s going to cost too much. So we voted to substitute the section from Madison to Guilford for those funds, and that was on April 11th. And I can say that Guilford is way ahead of us in planning. I have yet to see the, any plans, specific plans for the trail in the East River section. But we did have a discussion with the Greenway Trail people in October, and our town engineer stated that the, he had yet to hear back from the state on the transfer of the funds from one project to another, and so he didn’t hear until September 15th, and that we were moving forward. But we have not yet seen the plans or specifications for that yet, and we plan to have some public hearings, and also, we understand the state will require some public information sessions before we can go much further. So that’s where we are.
Thank you, Bob.
Okay.[1787.65][1787.65](APPLAUSE).
Hi, Jonathan Page, member of Leeds Island. What’s the chance that you have an incomplete plan in... What's the chance that you have an incomplete plan in Madison because you haven't figured out a way to get over the pristine salt marshes and everything around East River?
The question was, what's the chance we have an incomplete plan in Madison because we haven't determined how to get over the salt marshes yet? I can't answer that question. I don't know. Thank you.
Bob, thank you very much. Okay, we'll begin with the comments. Again, please keep it no more than three minutes. State your name and full address for the record, and, young lady, I think you're first. No? Sir, you're first, okay? You got tighter standing, so, okay. Okay.
Try to avoid being...
Name and address, please, okay. There you go.
Yes, okay, thank you. Yeah, my name is John Gwinell. I live at 52 Leeds Island Road in Guilford. Oh, okay, let's put this one in front, then. That's better. Is that better? All right.
All right, there we go.
My name is John Gwinell. I live at 52 Leeds Island Road in Guilford. I would like the Board of Selectmen to not approve this proposal, and I'd like to make a couple of comments regarding it. Toward the end of the September 19th Board of Selectmen meeting, Selectman Joe Mazza said, quote, "I don't want to do anything to hurt anybody's property," unquote. I'm sure the other selectmen feel the same way. However, this was when most of us were led to believe that the Shoreline Greenway Trail's co-chair statement at the Planning and Zoning Meeting, August 17th, that, quote, "We have talked to, talked with every homeowner along Route 1, and almost unanimously, everyone feels it's a really good idea." Also, in their newsletter in October, they state, quote, "Virtually all of the private landowners have expressed support." Now we find this is far from the truth, and the actual property owners along that Route 1 section, private and business, have come forward in letters, petitions, et cetera, to the press and to the town to state that this trail will, in effect, hurt them. And the majority of this Route 1 section properties are against the proposal. A word on the trail cost to the Guilford taxpayers. State documents, notably the multi-use trail implementation plan of the DOTs in 2015, clearly states that, quote, "Maintenance responsibility for these trail systems is contractually delegated to the respective municipality in which the trails reside." These documents also show that the state wants to set a priority of funds and resources to make the trail continuous by closing gaps. Additional sections could come sooner than some unknown future time that the Shoreline Greenway Trail would have us believe. Maintenance costs will be borne by us, don't be fooled. As to the liability cost, the town's present policy is probably fixed, but I cannot envision an insurance underwriter not taking into account the increased liability of the trail when considering the next premium. The state has a problem with high taxes and balancing budgets, as does Guilford, evidenced by budgets being voted down multiple times. Many in our town have a great deal of difficulty making ends meet with the high taxes, not only those on fixed incomes, but also regular families with children to raise. Many, if not all, the budget items are fixed or have built-in increases that are beyond the control of the Board of Selectmen. Now, however, you have a discretionary item that, if passed, will increase the cost to the taxpayers now and in the future. Please do not hurt these property owners and the taxpayers. Do not go forward with the proposal. Thank you.
To the Guilford Board of Selectmen, public works projects are expensive. They demand a planning process based on public consultation, a process that is open to public scrutiny. I've been a resident here for 25 years. I'm professor of architecture and urbanism at Yale University. I can tell you all that it is both common sense and best professional practice to establish a complete plan before ground is broken on any part of a major public project. One may choose to construct in phases, but first, a complete plan is essential. Now, the Shoreline Greenway Trail, which is a private, all-volunteer organization advocating this continuous bike path from New Haven to Madison, has not come up with a complete plan after 15 years of private donations as well as public funding. They haven't yet mapped the route. They are urging that construction begin quickly on a short, awkward segment alongside Route 1 in Guilford, with no guarantee that its continuation is desirable or even feasible. A continuous hard surface eight to 10 feet wide fits a town with an abandoned railroad right-of-way. But there is no abandoned railroad here. Guilford is a beautiful town where many groups have worked for decades to protect our landscape. We need to make sure new construction does not harm our historic districts, conservation land, and miles of protected scenic road. I think we also need a wider survey of Guilford residents' needs beyond that older transportation plan the engineer showed, something called a bike pad plan. Walkers may prefer more new sidewalks around town, like the one that's recently completed, or may prefer access, better access to woodland trails. Bikers may prefer designated lanes on quieter streets, removed from trucks and noise. I've examined the drawings for the proposed segment along Route 1 in the engineer's office. I was disappointed. For this paving project, there are 20 mature trees being eliminated and at least four more It's unclear to me that planting a small tree is a substitute for a mature tree in any way to protect those residents. There are two streets and 10 driveways interrupting the bike path, and that intersection where 146 meets Boston Post Road with a flashing light is one of the most dangerous in the town, and it hasn't been modified. So, I join with many of you to say that I hope that before the Selectmen approve this proposal, the town will create a more open, public process to determine the needs of cyclists and pedestrians, to map some alternative possible routes, and to set higher standards for design. Thank you.
Good evening, and thanks for the opportunity to speak tonight. I'm Bob Yarrow. I'm a resident at 715 Leeds Island Road in Guilford. I've been a professional planner also for more than 45 years, and I've had the opportunity to plan and build a number of parks, greenways, and bikeways across the Northeast, including the 110-mile Base Circuit Greenway around Boston, the Cape Cod Rail Trail, the Norwatack Rail Trail in Western Massachusetts, and others. And I think the real issue here, Mr. Selectman, in all, you know, all honesty, is, again, reiterating what Dolores just said, is that, is that we really need a plan for the whole corridor through the town of Guilford. That's the prudent way to move ahead with this thing, and it doesn't mean that we have to not move ahead with a first phase once we've done that, but we need to be, be informed about where this thing is going to go. All of the routes that I just mentioned were master-planned in whole cloth at the outset, and I know, and, and, you know, with extensive public input, and of course, you're going to get people opposed to something when you come forward with a major project, but, but then you also don't have people feeling like there's something that's been hidden from them, or that their secrets and their property is going to be affected in some way that it may or may not be. So, I guess, and, and, in other words, you know, Paul Newman's famous words, you know, that what we have here is a failure to communicate, and a lot of it is about this, the absence of a, of a, of a public plan that's been accepted by, by the town and by the, by the residents of the town. And I think, I live on Leeds Island Road, and I think a number of the folks here live along Route 146. This thing looks like a loaded gun aimed at us, and, you know, what happened in Liberty Street in Madison was that the same thing happened. You go up to Hammond Estate Park, and there's, and the finished section is lovely through the park, and then there's a sign that says, "Coming Soon." The rest of it is aimed like a loaded gun at Liberty Street, and guess what happened? The neighbors went nuts, and the town had to pull the project, and that's why they're generously offering to hand it over to us. Well, the same thing is happening here in town. And, and, you know, it's not a surprise that several hundred residents of town have said, "We want, we want to know where this thing is going to be built, how it's going to affect our properties before, before it moves ahead." The larger issue, I think, is, you know, it can't be built, if you look at these maps, can't be built across the Land Conservation Trust land, it can't be built across any of the major properties abutting Route 146. There's no corridor, no place to put this unless it goes along Route 1, which it could, although, you know, I think it's probably not desirable from a cycling point of view or any other point of view to run it through the commercial strips along Route 1. So, that puts it back on 146. We have one of two state-designated scenic roads and one of only two roads in the state that is also a National Register Historic District. The other one's the Merritt Parkway. The Merritt Parkway has a management plan developed by ConDOT to preserve its history, its scenery, its own design standards and so forth, and, and that's what's needed here. We need a master plan for Route 146 that can accommodate safely. The cyclists were already there, and there are thousands every year that are on the, on Route 146, but, but can be done in a way that doesn't widen the roadway, that protects the historic properties. You know, the oldest barn in the state is the Leet Barn, that is, what, about six inches away from the, the right-of-way? Many of our homes are five feet or less from the existing roadway surface, so we can't widen the roadway unless we're going to destroy this big, important piece of, of our town's character and the properties of many, many of the people here. So, that's what's needed. We need a master plan for the, for the corridor, for the, for the whole bikeway corridor. We need a master plan for, you know, for the, for the 146 section as well as the Route 1 section. If we can do that, then I think, you know, we can find a way to, an accommodation here that allows, allows the cyclists to, to win and allows the residents of this town to win. It allows us to move forward the way we should. Thank you. Good night.
My name is Peter Goldberg, 71 Griss Mill Circle, Guilford. There was an article recently in the paper about this evening's meeting in which residents were concerned about its impact on abutting property owners and the absence of the overall plan. I'd just like to address those two points. On, on October 20th, there was an article in the local paper in which they had, you can't see this, but this is a house that's for sale, and what the realtor says, "This house is close to the Guilford Town Green and the Guilford Land Trust hiking trails." My interpretation of that, adding hiking trails, is that that adds some value, some attractiveness to the, the house that they were trying to sell. In the October 15th Business Section of the New York Times, there was an article about walkability areas for older people, and what they found is that the price tags for neighborhoods can be lofty where there's walkability. They promised higher home equity down the road if you can afford to buy there. This individual did, found from a study that the walkability factor added more than 75% in increased housing value compared with car-dominated developments. Now, I know this is not an either-or situation, but I think that the, the added value, that something like a Greenway Trail, like the Farmington Canal Trail, has added a great deal of value, and I know I've spoken to many people along the Farmington Canal who've had houses there, and they say they are just delighted to be able to walk out into their backyards and take a hike, bike, wheel their baby carriages. Thank you.
Hi. I'm Pam Simons, 57 Spencer Avenue, Guilford, Connecticut, and my remarks are included in a larger statement, a longer statement, that has been already delivered to the Board of Selectmen. I've lived in the three shoreline towns of Guilford, Madison, and Branford for more than 50 years, and I've biked in every town, and I still do, on trails built in Branford, East Haven, and Madison in partnership with the Shoreline Greenway Trail, but alas, not in Guilford. Guilford is a wonderful place to live with many, many charms, but there's absolutely no safe route for biking, not one. And yet, bicycling has become a very popular recreation for millennials, for older people like myself, but not for children. Most kids don't bike like we did when I was young. Today, most parents discourage their children from biking because understandably, they're going to worry about their safety. As co-chair of the Guilford team and a founding member of the Shoreline Greenway Trail, I am committed to Shoreline Greenway's trail, trail's goal, to improve bike and pedestrian safety in our town. Interestingly, the concept to create a safe biking and walking trail along a shoreline was conceived right here in Guilford in 2001 by the Guilford Preservation Alliance, and they gave Shoreline Greenway Trail its first grant to get started, and in fact, the information meeting was held right here in this room the next year. And the very next year, as Jim referred to, the 2002 Plan of Conservation and Development was written. And in it, quote, "The explosion in bicycle use and walking by the general public requires, principally for safety considerations, the separation of bikeways and some walkways from automobile roadways," unquote. The plan also adapted an action plan item for the Board of Selectmen and the town engineer to provide more safe bikeways and walkways within Guilford, particularly, quote, "within the town center and along Boston Post Road," unquote. So, for 14 years, the town of Guilford has had the same goal as the Shoreline Greenway Trail. And that is exactly what the proposed project is. It meets our goal between the East River Bridge and Boston Street to create a safe, multi-use trail. It's a huge step in the right direction for Guilford, and now with the epidemic of distracted drivers on the roads, safety is more critical than ever. I want safe biking for myself, but even more, as a mother and a grandmother, I want it for my kids, your kids, our grandkids, for our whole community. So, I urge the Board of Selectmen to start right now to begin to create this safe biking, walking trail in the town of Guilford by voting yes for the Route 1 trail project. And I just want to add that you will have answers to several of the statements that have been made as more of our team will speak. Thank you.
My name is David Knapp, 65 Water Street, Guilford. I've lived here 28 years. I've been a member of the Key Arts Clambers Hiking Group since 1993, and two weeks ago, I turned 90 years old. And I'm still hiking. This is to the Board of Selectmen. Please remove my name from the petition requesting a no vote by you on Route 1 section of the Shoreline Greenway Trail. The person requesting my signature is a friend, but I was caught by surprise and really did not understand the full implications of this issue. I have been a strong supporter of this project from the very beginning, some 12 or 15 years ago, and want to thank the many trail committee members, including my friends Chet Blumquist and Joe Marshall, for the untold hours and years that they have spent working on this monumental, wonderful project, with no monetary recompense, only the immense joy and satisfaction of something that will serve hundreds of thousands of shore... of something that will serve hundreds of thousands of shoreline residents of all ages for 100 years plus. Even if, and I stress this, even if we only build this one section and never build another in Guilford, in my belief, it is worth every penny. Anyone who doesn't believe this, go and walk the Hammond Asset Trail in Madison. I did, two weeks ago, and it was midweek, when you wouldn't ordinarily get many people. It was mob, with dogs, with young people, with children, with old people, senior citizens and everybody, and you'd have to go a long ways to see a happier, more joyful group, just for that one section there. And it would be a tragedy for the 22,000 residents of Guilford to throw away all that has gone into this project. And to my knowledge, no one's rights or privileges have been or will be abridged, even if we only build this one section. Please vote to give all of us proud Guilfordites the joy and happiness this trail will bring, as it is already doing in our neighboring towns. Respectfully yours, David Knapp. Thank you.
My name is Kimberly Schmidt, and I live at 140 Wild Rose Avenue in Guilford, and I am in support of the Route 1 project. I am a mom with two little kids at home, and our family loves to do almost anything outdoors, especially biking. And in my hands, I have a petition with over 1,000 people who have signed their support for the Route 1 project in Guilford, and of the 1,000 people, actually, it's more than 1,000, it keeps going every day, every day, we get more and more, 776 are from Guilford, and they are in support of this project. That was as of 3:30 today. The numbers have gone up since then. And they all view this project as a wonderful addition to the town that they love. Many of those who have signed the petition are parents with children like myself, who simply are looking for a safe place to bike in Guilford. Others are avid cyclists, and repeatedly in the petition and their comment section have expressed their concerns about how dangerous it is to bike this section of Route 1. Denise writes, "My husband was hit and seriously injured while biking in Guilford on Route 1. He was hit by a woman on her phone who wasn't paying attention. Guilford needs this." While our petition has 776 people from Guilford in support of the trail, I recognize that there are many opposed. And so, wouldn't it be awesome if we could come together under the leadership of the town to figure out future projects together? Perhaps a committee could be formed to examine the issues of bike and pedestrian safety, as someone had mentioned earlier, especially along Route 146. The committee could include concerned homeowners, concerned cyclists, and concerned pedestrians. It makes sense to talk together, and it makes sense to come to solutions together. But in the meantime, I, along with 776 Guilford residents, urge the Board of Selectmen to go forward with the Route 1 project as planned. It is fully funded, it has detailed engineering plans, and it is ready to go. Thank you.
I live at 131 Boston Street, which is also Route 146, and it's just east. Can you hear me? Sorry, sorry. Oh, there's water here. So I live at 131 Boston Street, which is also Route 146, and it's just east of the Highland House Museum, where there's a marker there by postmaster Benjamin Franklin, marking the route from Boston to New York. And I know there have been numerous road improvements since the road was built and my house was built in 1844. There are storm sewers, there's paving, there's striping, and there's sidewalks. I happen to live where the sidewalk starts, on the north side of the road. And I felt strongly enough about the benefits of that sidewalk to pay half the cost of regrading and paving it shortly after I moved in. From a planning perspective, I appreciate the concept of complete streets, having separate bike areas and pedestrian areas from cars, and I encourage having them, especially where they connect important public services and amenities. Extending the Greenway Trail in Guilford along Route 146 offers just this opportunity to enhance the health and safety of walkers and riders along this historic shoreline route. This trail segment offers wonderful opportunities for recreation and safe travel for non-drivers to connect to the center of town in Hammond Asset State Park. I am generally in favor of the Shoreline Greenway Trail, but I am most in favor of this particular section. This path is a needed amenity, and attention to how it is designed and landscaped to enhance it is paramount. In this age of distracted drivers, childhood obesity, and growing isolation based on technology, adding a trail along a historic route connecting town centers, marshes, and beaches is an opportunity the town should embrace and literally build on. Thank you.
A year ago, as a pedestrian in Los Angeles, I was hit by a car and seriously injured. Four operations a month in the hospital. After a year, still a lot of physical therapy lies ahead of me. So now I'm even more passionately in favor of providing safe places for walking and biking. As a member of the National Rails to Trails Board of Directors for over 20 years, I have watched the Trail's movement blossom nationwide. Communities everywhere clearly recognize the importance of biking and walking trails. Guilford should too. Until a year ago, I spent nearly 15 years as chairman of the Shoreline Greenway Trail. Ever since the trail was started, it has enjoyed strong support. We now have over 2,600 dues-paying members with the most support here in Guilford. 950 families have joined. Can you help me with that? Thank you. How's that? Can you hear me now? I'll say it again. Until a year ago...
No.
No, don't say it again. Our neighboring towns have welcomed the trail. We have popular sections on the ground in Madison, Branford, and East Haven, and now we also have new sections in development in each of those three towns. Those opposed to the Route 1 section argue that no section should be built until the entire trail is planned and designed border-to-border. No map, no plan, no approval. Our board debated that question back in 2003. At the time, the National Park Service was working with us, and they advised, they told us that everywhere in the country, trails are built section by section. If you wait for approval and design of the entire trail, you'll never get started, they said. So that's been our modus operandi from the beginning, and it has worked well. None of the towns in which we have built sections have a plan for the whole town. If they had waited for that, we wouldn't now have the trail sections on the ground that are enjoyed by so many bikers and runners and walkers. Those opposed have also expressed concern about eminent domain. Let me be clear. The Shoreline Greenway Trail does not, has not, and will never support or condone the use of eminent domain for building our trail. This has been confirmed by a resolution passed unanimously by the Shoreline Greenway Trail Critics also say that the trail is too expensive. I say it's an investment we can't afford not to make. For a century, we've been spending far, far more on roads, and look what it's bought. Too many cars, millions killed in accidents, exhaust killing our planet.
Excuse me, Chip?
Yes.
You're going to have to end it.
I'm ending. We have to create the infrastructure so people can get out of their cars for short trips, an infrastructure that allows safer, healthier walking and biking. It will take a long time to build. Now is the time to start. So I urge you, Board of Selectmen, approve this Route 1 section, and I hope you'll also accept the suggestion of convening a committee representing all sides of the issue to examine how best to improve bicycle and pedestrian safety along Route 146. Thank you.
Jonathan Leepage, 2 Sanborn Road, Guilford, Connecticut. I came here with some prepared remarks, and I also came here to listen and get more information because I really have not understood what the plan for Guilford is, and I really don't think I have that much more information tonight after hearing the proposal than I had before I got here. Respectfully to the Guilford Board of Selectmen, I would say it looks to me like Guilford's getting a half-mile of free sidewalk, and if that saves the town a lot of money on the surface, that sounds okay to me. To cross Guilford, there are miles and miles of uncharted area where we have no idea where this trail is going. And when I start looking and thinking about an eight-to-10-foot-wide chip-sealed path that could cross along Route 146 or many other pristine wooded areas, there's nothing green about an eight-to-foot, 10-foot-wide trail that is chip-sealed. Chip-sealed is stone, and I believe it's oil, is it not, and asphalt? And until there's some type of plan that shows me where this trail is going to go and how it's going to comfortably cross Guilford, I can't imagine that there's that many people in this room that would really be in support of a very minute segment being moved forward on it until there really is a plan. Thank you very much.
I'm Brett Kronstadt, 42 Cornwall Lane in Guilford. My wife and I have lived in Guilford for over 40 years and raised our two children here. We wish that there had been more safe bicycling opportunities when they were growing up. As treasurer of the Shoreline Greenway Trail, I would like to emphasize that the construction of the Route 1 project is fully funded by a federal earmark and state grants. No Guilford town funds will be required to construct it. And the question is, why are federal and state governments supporting this project? There is great interest nationally, throughout New England and locally, for expanding biking and walking activities. I biked on many trails in Connecticut, Massachusetts. I enjoy biking on dedicated bike lines in New York City. Getting people out of cars and onto trails and onto bike paths is a goal shared by the national and state governments, as well as by the Guilford Plan of Conservation and Development. Some people argue that the project is too expensive and that the money should be used for social services. The federal earmark and the state money are specifically for the Shoreline Greenway Trail. The federal funds can be used in Guilford, Branford, or East Haven, but they could not easily be rerouted to social programs. One of the state grants is for building recreational trails. That one has a two-year contract period and will expire if it's not used as planned by September of 2018. If it's not used in Guilford, it is likely to be rerouted for building trails elsewhere in Connecticut. The real question is whether the money will be used for a Guilford trail or a trail somewhere else. Other towns would be glad to have the funds. Trails such as this section, to be built with federal funds, are more expensive to design and build than trails funded without federal money. The construction requirements do translate into a more durable trail that will require less maintenance in the future and will last longer. It's been said for many years that residents in the Northeast pay more in taxes than they receive in benefits from the government. It's especially true for affluent communities like Guilford. I'm not advocating that government money be spent because someone may think it's free money, but I am saying that when we have the money to build a needed and wanted trail here in Guilford without cost to the town's budget, we should take advantage of the opportunity and not allow it to go elsewhere. Thank you.
Thank you for calling this meeting. My name is Kent Blumer. I live on Leach Island Road, the western side, and I'm a Guilford resident. I'm concerned with what happens after, is this right here? I'm sorry. I'm concerned with what happens after the so-called segment down Route 146 to attempt to close the route between Madison and Branford. No one I know is opposed to providing amenities for cyclists or more safety for residents, which can be provided in ways other than following the monstrous formulaic SGT specifications. The big concern regarding an SGT roadway is serious damage to Guilford assets. This is a 10-foot-wide, this is a road. This is not a bicycle path in the Sylvan Woods. The damage to the beautiful walking trails of West Wood, should it have to go through there, historic architecture, and the delicate and threatened shoreline environment held together by Leach Island Road. Dynamiting granite escarpments, which would be necessary to get proper width, has already damaged aquifers such as ours and others. We've lost our ability to get water because they put the electrical system into the towers over the railroad for the shallow wells that don't have water pipes. In the 50 years my family has lived next to a marsh, we have witnessed nearly a half-foot rise in mean high tide with at least another one-and-a-half-feet rise, a foot rise, very likely by the end of the 21st century. Driving under bridges or over low elevations along the shoreline, largely 146, is increasingly blocked by high-tide water levels. The sides of the creeks in our marshes, for those of you who have looked at them, are rapidly eroding as the marsh fabric caves into the sea. Many of us have concluded that there is no acceptable way to build an SGT-type bike road through Guilford shoreline. Meanwhile, the SGT spent 15 years, which is more than four times that it took the U.S. to fight its share of World War II, by the way, to develop a nonexistent map. They don't even have a route. While proposing to build what we see ethically, legally, financially, while proposing to build this little section, which we believe is legally and environmentally, well, not, we're talking about the long one, impossible. I hope everyone in this room will agree that the residents of Guilford are justified in requesting that a substantive and detailed map of any SGT-proposed roadway through Guilford beyond the so-called segment must be presented and approved by Guilford taxpayers before the segment, which is a portion of the larger scheme, is approved for construction by Guilford Selectmen. Thank you.
Julie Schlesel, 11 Laurel Hall. Julie Schlesel, 11 Laurel Hall Road. I have no preparation for this. I didn't know I was gonna be standing up here talking tonight, but I feel very passionate about this whole subject. I have two children... I've been here, living here for about nine years. I have two children, ages 10 and 12, and their bikes sit in the garage. I don't let them ride them. And then once they got out of the... You know, they were doing the driveway. I won't let them on the road because I had a traumatic experience when I was about 10 years old and I lost my two best friends that I was supposed to be with that night on a straight road. And we have very windy roads here. So that experience like colors my, you know, my view of this whole project. And not only that, there was another tragedy at the end of my driveway where a six-year-old went around the block. A car pulled out of the driveway and hit him, and he died. And they had the outline on the floor. So these were really traumatic for me. And I guess my point is, is that as a community, we can't do without this trail for families, children, old people, young, doesn't matter, for bikers, walkers, you know, for everyone. And I think it would only benefit the town. And I think for those people that it's impacting personally, I understand that, you know, that it might really impact them, but I think as a whole, we need to make these improvements and start now, not waiting till my kids are in college and off, you know, out of bike-riding ages. I... That's all I have to say. I just have a personal note. And I also think it's a great endeavor. And I think if we can manage it piece by piece, that would be good.
Selectmen, thank you for giving this your serious consideration. My name is Peter Hawes. I live at 351 Nut Plains Road in Guilford. I've been here for about 15 years. I'm an avid bike rider, and I ride often from my home in the northern side of town to downtown in the harbor. I ride along the Guilford shoreline. And I spend a lot of time riding via Route 1 to Madison, both to downtown, to down by where the wharf is, and off to Hammond asset. And as just about anybody who rides these roads can tell you, I've had my share of very, very close calls out on Route 1. And this is a very, very dangerous place to ride. And for that reason, I joined as a volunteer for Shoreline Greenway Trail a couple of years ago. And for that reason and others, I support the proposed Route 1 section of trail. Now, my personal concerns aside, here's where the world is going. It's walkable, bikeable communities. The number of licensed drivers in every age group between 16 and 54 has declined. Far fewer millennials commute by car than their counterparts in the baby boom and Gen. X generations before them. And people of all ages want to live in places where they can get around without motorized vehicles all the time. Guilford lags behind a lot of other communities, and addressing this is important to our long-term future. What I find compelling about what Shoreline Greenway Trail is doing is less the notion of a 25-mile continuous trail than the idea of a sort of string of bike and pedestrian-friendly communities. Connected with one another someday, maybe, if possible, but within themselves, safer, healthier, more economically vital, and socially vibrant, and ever more appealing to young families and those of us who are older today. So what that's all about is connections, enabling people to get from where they are to where they want to go without cars. That means connecting neighborhoods with large populations to downtown and other business districts and workplaces, to schools and parks, to the train station, to the harbor, to Jacob's Beach. The proposed Route 1 trail is a critical step in making these connections. Far from what its critics have called a trail to nowhere, it's a vital link in getting people by bike, by foot, by wheelchair, by stroller, whatever means they take, from a neighborhood of more than 130 homes to the Calvin Leet School, to the fairgrounds, to downtown, and beyond. It's a worthwhile project in its own right for Guilford, saving pedestrians, cyclists, and others from a dangerous stretch of Route 1. However, the trail will also connect with a three-quarter mile section being developed on the west side of Madison. The trails will meet at the East River, tying Boston Street to Guilford with a... Initially, with a point as far east as the railroad overpass by the car dealers in Madison. That's one-and-a-half miles of safe, off-road, walking, biking, and wheeling in the beginning of a meaningful connection between two beautiful shoreline downtowns. To our selectmen, I hope you see the big picture, and I hope you will cast a vote for all of Guilford for the benefit of generations. Please approve this proposed stretch of trail now.
Bruce Simons, 57 Spencer Avenue, Guilford. I'm here to read a letter from former Senator Ed Meyer, who could not be here today. Dear Selectmen, a scheduled conflict prevents me from being with you this evening, but I do want to urge your careful consideration in support of the first phase of the Guilford Greenway Trail in Guilford. The trail has progressed well in the other three towns, East Haven, Branford, Madison, as a result of good working relationship with the Boards of Selectmen of those towns. Guilford should not be the exception. As your former state senator, I helped to get a substantial state grant for the trail, believing strongly in this project for three reasons. First, because the recreation produced by the trail is good for all of us, realizing it will give us a healthy, environmentally sound place of outdoor activity. Secondly, the trail will be an attractive feature of the shoreline, promoting tourism, improving our town's economy, a selling point for those considering a home purchase in our area. Third, and most important, the trail will give us a vital new safety component in Guilford where bicycle accidents on Route 1 and Route 146 are just waiting to happen. If these reasons are valid to you, I urge you to work with the representatives of the trail, and I would, by extension, to others in this room, to make this project work in Guilford. Sincerely, Ed Meyer.
Good evening. I am Nona Blumer, retired historical room and preference librarian from Our Guilford Library. Bull-dozing and off-road Shoreline Greenway Trail, SGT, through Guilford, boundary to boundary, would perforce entail: 1. violating historic districts; 2. dynamiting granite escarpments; 3. destroying landmark trees; 4. infilling tidal wetlands; 5. penetrating Westwood's walking trails north of the railroad tracks and Route 146 by way of Three Corners Road entering from Jacobs Lane or Wildrose Avenue, or by way of Sam Hill Road, Moose Hill Road, or New Quarry Road; and 6. resorting to eminent domain for the construction of a multi-use recreational road, the cost of which would far exceed by tens of millions of taxpayers' dollars the cost of the 0.7-mile proposed segment along Route 1, or a shoreline trail to be permitted under the partial umbrella of state ownership and state right-of-way. The three owners of property adjacent to the Guilford-Branford boundary line, south of the railroad tracks, Yale University, the Blumer family, and the Old Quarry Association, have already documented their no to an SGT easement. If Guilford Selectmen vote yes to constructing the proposed Route 1 segment regardless of public opposition and the absence of a mapped plan, they would irretrievably provide the SGT directors with a permanent propaganda springboard catapulting their unplanned recreational roadway toward Branford, even as they would officially sanction and endorse the SGT, one segment at a time, modus operandi, which excludes substantive information about where the next segment in the SGT no-plan agenda would land. It is the responsibility of our elected selectmen to be mindful of the consequences that would ensue were they to approve this isolated and disconnected Route 1 segment without a publicly-approved map of the SGT-proposed path through Guilford. The potential damage to Guilford from an SGT throwaway is serious. Thank you.
Board of Selectmen, members of the Guilford community. My name is Dr. Elsa Stone, and I live at 1 Moose Hill Road. I've had the good fortune to be a resident of the town of Guilford for the past 20 years. Guilford is a beautiful and caring community, and it saddens me that it is being torn apart by this controversy. I would ask us all to take a step back and look at the larger issue. We are all residents of the state of Connecticut, and we are in the midst of a fiscal crisis. We have a $1.5 billion deficit. To ameliorate that deficit, all state departments have been told to cut their budgets by 10%. Essential services to the most needy and disabled among us are being slashed. In good conscience, how can we in Guilford spend any state funds on this, at this time, on a lovely but unessential project that benefits the abled among us? Guilford is a community with strong human values, resiliency, and ingenuity. We care about the well-being of our citizens and our environment. We are grateful to be able to reside in such a beautiful place. We do not thrive on acrimonious divisions. There is no urgency to implement the first portion, Guilford portion, of the Shoreline Greenway Trail. That money is needed elsewhere. And I would like to also say, I do completely concur that there ought to be a commission composed of SGT people and shoreline people to try and work on the issue of bike safety. That is certainly critically important. But right now, that money is needed elsewhere. What would really befit this community is for us all to urge the DOT and the DEP and other agencies involved in this to return the money to the general fund, where it can be allocated to helping the needy and less fortunate among us.
My name is William H. Leet, and I live at 616 Leets Island Road. I've been asked to read a letter to the editor of the Guilford Courier dated September 29th. Dear Sir/Madam, we write this as representatives of Leet family, who have owned land in Guilford for more than 350 years. Our family lands include pasture, farmland, marshes, and woodlands, the portions of our land that butt federally protected scenic highway alternately known as Leets Island Road and 146. As directors of our two family land-holding corporations, Leet Brothers and Leet Associates, we wish to state definitively that our family corporations have no intention of granting Shoreline Greenway Trail easements to cross any portion of our respective land holdings for their proposed bike road. Over the last 15 years, representatives of the town of the Shoreline Greenway Trail have approached individual members of our family to press for granting of such easements. They have consistently been refused. Running a bike path through our property is fundamentally incompatible with our use of land for agriculture and livestock. We made our family's intention clear in a letter to the Board of Selectmen dated the 2nd of August 2011, which includes this statement. We are strongly opposed to the construction of a portion of a trail through our productive woodlot, and permission will not be granted. We hope this letter, expressing our settled intention not to grant any easements to the Shoreline Greenway Trail, will be accepted as our final statement on the matter. We further ask that their organization refrain from including any portions of our land holdings in planning documents for their bike road through Guilford now and in the future. Such inclusion would misrepresent our family and corporate decision on this matter. Respectfully submitted, Jonathan Leet Page and Lawrence R. Leet III, both presidents of Leet Brothers or Leet Associates. Thank you.
Am I speaking okay into this? You'll be all happy. My name is Short. Sue Cohen, River Colony, 3-mile course. My letter was published in last week's Courier, and a copy was sent to the Board of Selectmen. I hope many of you have read it. As the Yale professor Ken Blumer stated in his letter, "A segment can be an intention to explore a number of possible plans." This has been their intention, pursuing a 25-mile continuous plan, a trail. I have been to the engineering department. I have seen the plans, or several large books of plans and drafts, and lots of information. I have seen the intended routes. I have seen the offshoots, which are against SGT-guiding principles, some of them invading the ecology. Fact is, SGT has exhausted our engineering department, utilizing its services for well over 10 years, thousands of hours since 2006. Statements have been made that there is something wrong with Guilford for not acting in unison with towns like East Haven, Branford, and Madison, that something is wrong with the resistance to conforming to what SGT has proposed is for us. What they have determined is in our best interest. Well, let me tell you, SGT, that we, the people, citizens, taxpayers, have decided our path since 1639. We, the people, are the stewards of the town, listed on the National Registry of Historic Places. We, including our town center, our beloved town green. And I stand with the Leet family that the federally-designated scenic highway, Route 146, known to us as Leets Island Road, remain a testament to its agricultural and not become its agricultural history and not become a bike highway. Thank you.
I'm Monica Brackney, 332 West Lake Avenue, Guilford. I'm here to show my support for this trail. I've heard a lot of... I've heard a lot of the people saying that, you know, just building this one section, you know, wouldn't be worth it. And I strongly disagree. I live near where this section would be, and I ride my bike to the grocery store most weekends, and I ride on Route 1. And I'd be lying if I said that it wasn't a little bit scary, but I... scary, but I believe it's the right thing to do. And I think that people that want to use their bicycles for transportation so that they can, you know, for several reasons, for exercise, for decreasing their carbon footprint, should have a safe place to do that. There are a lot of streets in this town that are not safe for children to ride their bicycles. The streets maybe are too narrow or have cars that are going too fast, and even a short bit of trail would be a great thing for those kids. I've heard one gentleman talk about how large the trail was, that it was too large, like it was a road, and I know we've got some tiny roads here, but I don't think that any of them are eight to nine feet. And, you know, so it might seem really big, but if you really think about how big that is, it's perfect size for bicycles because you, on a bike trail, you don't have two ways, like you have, you know, like a road, you need two ways to go, just like a road, one person going this way, one person coming this way, so you don't crash. And even if you're not into biking or walking, you know, some people are just like, love their cars, and that's okay, too. But for every person who is on a bicycle on this trail, like me, going to the grocery store, that's one less car that you have to put up with on the road, and that's that much less pollution from my car that you have to smell and that you have to breathe in. And, you know, we're not just facing high rates of childhood obesity, we're also facing high rates of childhood asthma and adult asthma, too. And so I, I hope that you will, that you'll build this trail. I know that, I love plans. I love a complete plan, it's awesome, but sometimes you just have to chip away at things, you know, one spot at a time. If you look at any, you know, awesome trail, all over, any of the trails that are built in this country, they were built, you know, one section at a time. And it's tough out here in New England, and this infrastructure was built a long time ago, and it wasn't, when I say infrastructure, I'm talking about the roads, and they weren't actually built originally for cars, they were built for pedestrians and horses and things, and now we, but anyway, I think a trail would be a really good thing for this town. Thanks.
My name is David Jones. I live at 60 Boston Post Road, Guilford. I am here to speak in favor of the moving forward with the construction plan that is being considered at this meeting. I'm speaking with the support of my wife Kathleen and of my son Christopher of Millennial, who, contrary to many of his college friends, has returned here to Guilford to raise his new family. None of us are members of the Shoreline Greenway Trail Organization, nor have we made any financial contributions to it. The trail is a regional effort, and I believe it will make progress towards its goal of connecting New Haven to Madison in fits and starts for many years. It is not my purpose tonight to support or oppose any of the future plans. I am speaking in favor of what that plan that was up on the board there was talking about, that seven-tenths-of-a-mile-long section that runs along a United States highway. And I want to say that I, why I think that improvement, standing alone on its own merits, is important to my neighborhood. The state of Connecticut owns the buffer along the highway. It, I, my property is partially owned, in fact, almost half of the front yard is owned by the state. I knew that when I purchased the home. This new pathway will seriously crowd me. It's 23 feet away from my dining room windows. It consumes one-third of my, what people would think would be my front yard. So yes, in some ways, it's a bummer. But I support the plan. It fits the primary legal obligation of the town of Guilford to promote the health, safety, and welfare of the community. The stretch of highway in front of my house is extremely dangerous to pedestrians, bicyclists, baby carriages, cars, trucks, not to mention the skunks and the raccoons and the squirrels. This pathway improvement, being funded primarily from our greater community, the state of Connecticut and the United States, would make this stretch much less lethal. The road is very dangerous, I know. I worried every time my son went off on his bicycle. Each time he did was a remembrance and a reminder for me, a reminder that a daughter of the Harrisons, the last family to live in my house, was hit and killed by a car while on her bicycle at the top of that hill. Life is dangerous, life is precious, but occasionally, an opportunity arises to make the world a little safer. You are considering one of those right now. This pathway along a stretch of highway would benefit and protect everyone traveling on foot, bike, or wheelchair. While I stand here in support, I know that I'm losing some of my property. I'm willing to trade that off to help make it a safer place. And let's be real, it isn't my property, it's the state's, as it is through this whole section of the trail. I hope parents in the new families of my neighborhood can feel that, yes, you know, that my kids could get on the bike or walk up the hill to friends' houses or down to the town green for the parade, and I hope that John Harrison and his daughter Gloria are looking down here tonight and saying, "Thank you, David, for speaking out for, on our behalf also." There are businesses that will be impacted. To the Patel's, thank you so much for your efforts and success in making the top of that hill look so much better. I hope that your property looks just as good after the trail is created as it does now. And I hope that some of your guests, after a long drive in their car, can feel inspired to burn some energy and get some fresh air while they walk down the hill, past my house, and go to the, stand on the bridge and watch the water of the river flow by. To all of you concerned out there about the future path of the trail, please take this...
I have to ask you to record, please.
Very good. To the Board of Selectmen, I know that you'll be listening to the concerns of the people in favor and against, and all the fears for the future. Please consider exactly what you were called to decide on this time, this specific plan for this seven-tenths-of-a-mile, and it steps towards safety. Thank you.
Hi, my name is Kathy McKenzie. I live at EDC View Terrace, Unit 35. I think it is a shame that we, as taxpayer citizens, have to have this conversation to oppose the irresponsible, often disrespectful, and often imperious attitude of the SGT. It is even more shameful that there is little transparency, little sharing publicly or privately, personally, their efforts to commandeer 400 feet of West River frontage property as a bikeway, and properties on Leet's Island Road, Boston Street, Post Road, and protected marshlands and wetlands. Many of the intended properties, which have been in Guilford families for generations, will have huge swaths of land removed for the selfish purpose of the Shoreline Greenway Trail to create a continuous 25-mile biking route from East Haven to Madison. No matter whose property lies in their wake, this is not a free sidewalk. It will be funded by your tax dollars. Unfortunately, there is a plan, their plan, which does not include or consider the rights of we hard-working, cranky Yankee Guilford citizens and business owners. We deserve a plan, a plan for all, a map for all, approval for all, or not at all. I urge the Board of Selectmen to oppose this plan. Thank you for allowing me to speak.
Good evening. My name is Elizabeth Norgard. We, the citizens of historic Guilford, find that the SGT Shoreline Greenway Trail is an ill-prepared idea because the SGT is trying to usurp property away from the residents in levying liberal eminent domain laws. The SGT is literally inviting our government to become custodian of our property, which is antithetical, to avoid to fall victim to the matrix idea of giving in to what the SGT wants and do what we residents want, which is a study in imperial fashion that would objectively look at all practical conclusions, both for and against, in and out of state, region, and nation. It is not fair to our residents to rush this through the people of Guilford and ignore a vital study that needs to be done. A study should be fair and transparent with no backdoor deals. To rush the decision is both suspect and questionable. There are families here whose ancestors go back to the founding of Guilford itself. We should never treat Guilford as a mi, as a metropolis, metropolis, I'm sorry. It is impossible to be everything to everybody without losing character and uniqueness that towns like Guilford provide because other communities like Cheshire and Farmington have built foot and bike trails. It seems that certain community leaders feel compelled to follow suitable, to follow suit in these towns and cities, the same who prefer to play, follow the leader instead of looking at what we already have that makes Guilford an iconic on the Connecticut shoreline. Being like every other town will surely murder a town's true face.
Hello, good evening. My name is Kristin De Souza, 113 Sam Hill Road. We bought that house when I was pregnant 15 years ago. My husband is a physician at Yale, and we decided to move to Guilford because of the promise of a wonderful place to raise a family. As a Guilford parent, I am requesting the Board of Selectmen to vote yes for this trail alongside Route 1. Currently, children and families do not have safe biking options within our town. Parents are leery of allowing children to ride on narrow streets with blind corners or busy state routes. For example, I live just a mile and a half away from my son's elementary school, but I would not allow him to ride his bicycle to school because it was unsafe. Recent cycling and pedestrian tragedies within our own town and neighboring towns have heightened these safety concerns, which is what led me to start joining the Shoreline Greenway Trail as a volunteer. The proposed Route 1 section, if approved, will be the first and only opportunity for children and families to bike off-road. Furthermore, it will provide a safer access into our town center, including Calvin Lee Elementary School. The trail will provide an opportunity for safe and healthy outdoor activities. We need this in today's world, and promote a greater engagement within our community. The ability to have these experiences in Guilford is very important to me and to many like-minded parents. I completely understand that there are opponents to this. As I look at the letters to the editor, as I listen to the comments this evening, I understand that people are very concerned about the beauty of our town. I am, too. I live right off of 146. I understand that, but I think there is an opportunity for us to talk about what happens in the future. But right now, this section doesn't have an issue with many of the things that are being brought up tonight. So with that said, I think that we have to start somewhere, and now is the time for that. So I ask you to vote yes so that our Guilford children and families can begin to experience the same safe biking opportunities that our neighboring towns, Madison, Branford, and East Haven, provide for their families. Thank you.
I'm Michael McNiff, Marshall Avenue, and I've only been in town about 20 years, so I'm a relative newcomer. But I guess, I just like to say that I love this town, and I love that people care so passionately about these issues. But I'd also like to say that I feel like this project that's been proposed to us tonight in some, is a compromise. Ideally, we would have a continuous bike trail from one end of the town to the other, and it wouldn't adversely affect everybody, anybody. But right now, Route 146, every now and then, it floods. So there are other issues that have to be taken care of before the bike trail gets that far. But that doesn't mean that at the west end of town, or east, where Madison is, gosh, that's uphill from here, folks, that doesn't flood, that's low-lying fruit. Let's not make perfection be the enemy of the possible. I hope you'll vote yes on this section of the town, the trail.
Good evening. My name is Robert Vavasor. I live at 575 Leet's Island Road in Guilford, and you'll have to forgive me, but I, my head is about to explode with cognitive dissonance, listening to a tale of two Guilfords here. Let me just back up, and I'm gonna ask your indulgence, Joe, and the Board, because I prepared three minutes to do what I thought was, everyone's gonna do three minutes, and I haven't heard anybody keep to three minutes. So I'm not gonna write the, you know, warrant piece, but I will... Let me just, let me just tell you this. This is kind of, really, I would call this the accidental hearing. We wouldn't be here tonight if what happened in August hadn't happened, which was a cam review for the first phase of the Route 1 section of this trail, had to be up for approval. And it was referred incorrectly, or pardon me, was not referred correctly to begin with the Board of Selectmen to make that decision to refer it. The political decision is required by state law to send that to Planning and Zoning to make this cam approval that was requested to begin the first segment of Route 1. Because that wasn't referred correctly, it came before this body, and on September 19th, many of us who, for the first time, knew we had a venue to speak in Guilford and ask questions about this trail that we'd heard about but we had no details about, went to the Board of Selectmen and presented them with a petition that had been taken up in 72 hours with some 324 signatures of Guilford residents all, who said, "We do not want this to start until we have a full map and a full plan and a discussion of what this is about." There has been a woeful act of discussion and knowledge in this town about what this really means to Guilford. And so we're here tonight because, not, I think, to the pleasure of Joe and some other people on the Board, the vote was taken to give a public hearing because why wouldn't you not give people a chance to be heard who said they had not been heard? And that's why we're here tonight. And if this hadn't, if that hadn't happened and petition had been dropped, there would not have been a hearing tonight for all of us to get together and talk about what we really should be talking about in Guilford. This map that's over here was generated from data that was collected from the petition, plus another group of names that was collected, and we are now well over 500 names. We're collecting more names every day. Every single one of them is from Guilford. We elected not to do an online internet push-poll or Facebook I Like campaign because we didn't think that was respectful to ourselves and to Guilford. We deserve better. We deserve to hear from each other and talk to each other about what this would mean for our town. So we did, we made a commitment that we would do this the Guilford way, face-to-face, old-fashioned New England, and I'm very proud to say that they took 15 years to not produce a plan, but we took only five weeks to produce that map. And that map shows, in orange, all of the people who signed the petition, which says, "We want a plan, we want a map, we want a budget, and we also want a firm commitment that eminent domain would never be used." The red sections represent land in Guilford, where the Shoreline Greenway Trail has already in past years sought permission to cross those properties, and they've been formally and fully re... and fully refused in writing. If you look to the far left, which is West Guilford, that large red section below the line towards the lower-left corner is Yale Study Center. Yale's Peabody Museum manages it? They said by letter this year, no, they would not grant it. It was incompatible with their mission. The large, large red line that goes way up, that's on the far left, that's a combination of the Leets Family Farm Holdings, State Forest, and the Guilford Land Trust Holdings. Each one of those has at one time or another been approached by the Greenway Trail and asked for an easement to go through there, and they have been refused in writing. If you look to the south, to the right of the lowest left corner, that large pollywalk that's red, that's the old Quarry Neighborhood Association. They have said no in writing. If you look all the way to the right, all those other reds there, those represent a variety of state-owned fragile lands that the Greenway Trail has approached and asked if they could put their trail through there, have been refused in writing. As you see, too, the yellow or the orange is all over Guilford. This is not a small group of people, or malcontents, as some people have described us in their letters to the editor. These are Guilford people, these are local people, and we are all throughout Guilford. We're focused in this, just for illustration's sake, on South Guilford, because we know that is where the plan has always been for the Greenway Trail to go out 146. And as you can see, there is significant support for the idea that this town needs to put on the brakes, stop, and sit down and have a real discussion, not a one-night event like we're having tonight, just because there was a petition that was delivered on September 19th, but really discuss what this means. And that's what the people who signed the petition asked for. We had numerous people sign our petition who are Shoreline Greenway Trail supporters and donors, and they said they did not believe that there had been adequate discussion, they did not think the process had been transparent, and they thought it was absolutely important that there be a full plan. So when you look at that map, you will see there is an awful lot of "no, we don't want it," which complicates how they will build this trail in full that they would like to build. But there's an awful lot of orange, where people, your townspeople, your neighbors, are saying, "Stop, orange light, and talk about this, get a plan, get a map before you build something, because it will affect us all, and we will pay maintenance taxes on it." For a town that just had three tries to pass a budget, that's not a small thing. I thanks for your time. You're about to cut me off, Joe?
I am, because you and I are back and forth. I gave you more than that.
Did you?
But I will correct you.
Yeah.
Your petition had no valid legal precedent. We checked with legal counsel. The public hearing that you had tonight was brought about because Selectmen Cartier made a motion to have a public hearing, and that was not because of your petition. And then the Board of Selectmen, when the motion was made, I think was seconded by Selectmen Haverhill, and that's why we have the public hearing tonight.
I understand how it happened, because I was there, and I agree with you. But the fact is, when we gave you the petition, they were asking you for a hearing.
No legal precedent, okay?
Okay.
Are there two sets of the roads in the town of Guilford? My name is Yogesh Patel, and my wife's...
Name and address, please.
Oh, sorry, yeah, that's how I'm coming. My name is Yogesh Patel, and my wife Sonal Patel. I own the Comfort Inn and the Tavern in Boston Post Road. Thank you. We just learned that Greenway Plan called for 10 feet wide bike path to cut our 60 feet from the road in the Comfort Inn and 53 feet in the Tavern Inn, middle of our lawn taking our two gardens. No one even showed us map or explained the detail of the construction, and certainly no one asked for our approval. We have been left entirely in the dark about plant the wood, bring pedestrian and bicycle traffic right off our front door. When we bought this property in 1999, it was eyesore. First, we built the hotel, then we spent five, six years improvement. The landscaping had to cost roughly about $120,000. When we had cut a tree, bring the construction equipment, the town required us to plant five new trees for every nature tree we removed. The plan for the bike were required cutting down at least dozen of nature tree, many more, including historic maple at the top of the Boston Street. Will die a slow death from damage to their roots. But SGT not required to replace any of those trees. Are there two sets of the roads in Guilford? One for hard-working business people like us, whose reputation depend upon the attractive appearance of our hotel, and another for private interest group pushing for the trail. We provide accommodation for thousands of visitors of our town every year, for major holidays, Guilford Fair, graduation, weddings. If the town acting for the Shoreline Greenway Trail people can do this with us impetally, what to keep them from doing to our neighbor? Please, Board of Selectmen must not approve this plan. Thank you.
My name is Pat Lee, and I live at 10 Horseshoe Road, part of the Sunrise community, abutting the proposed trail. I've lived in this neighborhood for approximately 50 years. My mom has a home in Sunrise and has for 53 years, and my son bought a home here last year. To say that we have an interest in this neighborhood would be putting it mildly. We all respectfully ask that the Board of Selectmen refuse to approve the Shoreline Greenways Trail as stated with no full route disclosed. It wasn't until we saw the actual town plans that we felt a need to educate our neighbors on the reality of the project. It is nothing less than a 10-foot-wide chipseal road invading many of our neighbors' yards unbeknownst to them, and a scary traffic and bike scenario for our seniors and young drivers to navigate with absolutely no safe connection to downtown as advertised. Prior to a meeting organized in my home, no one had any contact with the SGT. After our meeting was announced, we all became the targets of a barrage of communications from the SGT spokespeople, with numerous emails and a canvassing of the neighborhood. What we subsequently discovered was that misinformation and untruths were being put out to our community as facts. When Mr. Charlton from SGT and Mr. Portley from the town were questioned at a neighborhood meeting, the inaccuracies continued. We were told things such as Madison had an improved future segment of the trail, not true, and all the neighbors having been notified and being on board, not true, to cite just a couple. We were assured that the SGT wanted to work with neighbors and communities to create something we all wanted, but when asked if the plan could be scaled down to a more environmentally sound and aesthetically pleasing plan, we were told that was not part of the vision the SGT had for this segment, and that the 10-foot-wide road was it, and that they would take their money and go elsewhere if not approved as such. What Sunrise needs is a safe way for our members to walk and bike to the green. We don't need a 10-foot-wide road, and we don't need the Shoreline Greenway Trail people to plan what is best for the town. This is a wonderful opportunity for the entire community to collaborate together to make a safe, attractive, and useful addition to the east end of town. Let's not partner up with a group that has been dishonest in its previous dealings with the townspeople, but step up and work together to create something of which we can all be proud. Thank you.
I'm going to have to take a two-minute break so I can change the tape.